It's not to be, there we go. Not to be negative or critical, it's just a point that it's nice to know what we're discussing so that we have, in case we have to do any individual research, we're not blindsided at the table. And that was a question that I know sometimes I've been guilty of and I have rectified it and seen the error of my ways and have recanted my sins.
Okay, and you saw the error of your ways I stepped in? Okay, so 7A, let's just, we can discuss it, but we won't come out with any motions on these. Counselor Dawes?
If there are no more additions or deletions than I would, or if, and if anyone agrees to accept the agenda with the addition of 9A as presented, then I would make the motion to accept it.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay. Staff report, CAO.
Thank you, Your Worship. My report is attached to the agenda. I did this month add a few additional comments just to help, there were some questions about where we were with some of the motions, and so I added just some very brief comments to try and add a little bit of information in the report, but if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them now or later.
Go ahead.
Just one, Your Worship. The one on council advisory committees, the staff be directed to provide a breakdown of travel costs in this fiscal year with the mayor and councilors, and the explanation is to be completed when the staff have completed the water connection digitization project? That's what's holding it up?
It's resources, and I spoke to the Director of Finance about it, and he does have a resource that is currently scanning water service cards that go back 100 to 125 years that allow staff to find the water service connections, and there are several binders of these. They're almost finished scanning them, so that we have them digitally and available. Once that person has finished that job, their next job will be to take the expense reports and populate a spreadsheet so that it can be put on the website.
Good. Anything further for the CAO? Fire Department? The chief's not here, no? Good for him. Deserves the vacation with this, all that's been going on. Planning Department report. Caroline's here. I'll get that on for you.
So you all should have the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I must be missing something. Any questions for Carolyn? I don't have it, but it doesn't matter. Good to go. Economic Development report. There it is. Okay, Natalie's away. She can send that when she gets a minute. Yep, go ahead.
Just a quick question, Your Worship, I suspect you can answer it. Where are we at with the RFP process with the high school? That thing's costing us $12,000 to $15,000 a month to run, and I was kind of hoping that we would be making some progress. Has there been delays, or have we changed, or where are we at with that?
Was there a deadline? There must have been a deadline.
We have an RFP out for a Realtor to remember council's motion to hire somebody with international and certainly national scope to market the, as a commercial property. That RFP, the closing date, I believe, is 19th? It was the 19th. Natalie has been away this week on business retention and expansion training. She'll be back on Monday, and I'll review what submissions we have at that time, and we'll bring forward a recommendation to council. On the other initiative is we were seeking an appraisal of the property, and that letter of opinion on property value, I believe, is due next week, so we'll have that as well.
Operational Services Engineers report. So we're finished with Hawthorne, looks good. Did somebody take some of our flowers and planters and?
What was that?
I just thought, somebody said that maybe there was some damage done on Hawthorne Street, but maybe not. That's good. Good.
I went down there the next day, Your Worship, and everything looked intact to me unless they picked some flowers, but all the shrubs and everything seemed to be intact. I saw the comment, but I couldn't see it unless there was a planter disappeared from the market, but everything looked there.
That's good news. Phil?
Dave, the fountain in Milton, Lake Milo. What's the story on that?
Should we be able to install the data lines electrically? Should we finish today?
And the other one is, I saw we lost a light standard down here opposite the dually. Somebody backed into it, somebody hit it, somebody, it looks like they ran over it with a bulldozer or something.
No, no, it wasn't whatever that happened.
One right off, just off the corner here, right off Frost Park, it's in several pieces.
You think we should sell it, tell us?
Me and the person who knocked, Natalie called, tell us? Oh, okay.
That's not important, the flowers are. Okay. Go ahead.
Dave, regarding Milo, we're putting both fountains in, I trust? Thank you.
Anything else for the engineer? Go ahead.
Not really for the engineer, more for our traffic authority, but he wears his hat. Dave, we discussed some time ago the feasibility of putting a crosswalk, I know that's an ugly word, but a crosswalk in on Parade Street for the new walking trail, and perhaps look at something, and I know we discarded the one on Stars Road, but I've had some questions about that on Parade Street, because if the pedestrians are to cross safely, the nearest one is on the corner of Pleasant and Parade, and there's quite a jag down, and the next one to cross is up by the seniors' home. Is there any possibility we could get a crosswalk in there? People in motorized scooters are the ones that are asking for it.
Well, I was doing an assessment, and looking at what would be required in the light of, light of the crosswalk. Would it be a cheap crosswalk?
But we have, the crosswalk, for example, on the corner of Pleasant and Parade, I don't believe that has any lighting, does it? Or are you talking just an overhead light standard with a regular light? We don't have any, we don't have very many of those crosswalk sign thingies on many of our crosswalks. I know we have them around the schools, but do we necessarily have to put one there? I mean, I would think it would just be.
It'd be part of the school route.
Yes, but we've got a lot of crosswalks on the school route that don't have overhead lighting. That particular one's just for that little trail, which is a good kilometer away from the crosswalk, from the school, from the nearest school. And the people who are asking about it are seniors who use scooters and that like to go on. It's a lovely trail, but they're concerned about safe access.
Well, really, the gap between the vehicles there is that you have to cross, but like I said, I was doing an assessment about the financial cost of it.
So you're saying we have to put a light over that?
Well, it should be a special crosswalk, basically.
Yeah. Okay. So you're still looking at it, or have you dismissed it? What do I tell these people?
I was saying, it's a financial implications, it's a cost of the road.
Could you maybe give me some, I just want to know what to tell people?
Okay, so it's a mid-block crosswalk, because there isn't a natural stop there, right? It is not at a stop sign. So typically, we don't put overhead lighting or additional signals when you're at an intersection with a stop. That one is mid-block, like the one that's further up, like the one at Milo, like the one down by the skate park, where we do put extra lights and signals in place so that somebody crossing the road can do so safely, because cars aren't stopping there necessarily, naturally. So Dave will cost that out, and we'll bring it forward. It is not currently in the capital budget, but when he figures out the cost, we can see if we can figure out a way.
And just other one for the traffic authority, and this is a how come question, and I don't expect an answer. The crosswalk that's on the corner of, I believe it is Chestnut, and going into Vonn Estates, going off of, that would be off of Brunswick Street, is a very odd crosswalk, because it crosses on the west side of the street to a gravel ditch, and then the crosswalk is on the other side of the street, and I'm wondering is, sidewalk, yeah. No, the sidewalk's over there, but the crosswalk's over here. And I know Counselor Mooney, you walk a lot, and it's always one of these scratching my head, I can never understand the logic of why we have a crosswalk going across the street, going into a field, when the sidewalk is on the other side. And I'm just wondering if it's something we can look into, because again, a resident who walks a lot has asked me that question. I honestly don't know the answer, so just passing it on, and I don't expect an answer, Dave, but maybe you could look at that before we repaint it, because it would make more sense to have the crosswalk on the other side of the street?
There's no, there's no big reason.
No, I have no reason.
Yeah. I live across the street, I live across the street, and I try to use the crosswalk, but I do, I walk right into the gravel, and then I, yeah, so it's just a matter of moving it. Okay. Good. Anything else for the engineer? Finance Department? No money, you don't have to talk, Chair.
Okay. No, just working with auditors, they were in last week, we did the Mariner Center, they're in next week for Waste Park, and mid-July, they come in for water in town, so we just continue working with them for now.
Working with them with regards to the Mariner Center?
Auditors. Working with the auditors to get the year-end recent statements out.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the finance? Recreation? Frank? Busy summer?
Yeah, busy summer at the Rec Department. I distributed some of the summer program pamphlets that are, that we've been busy taking registration for about three weeks now. So our summer staff coordinators have been on, busy putting their summer plans together, getting out to all the schools in the area, and promoting all our summer programs. So from the programming side, we're doing great, we had a great registration day, and lots of days are filling up with the summer day camp programs for kids ages five to 12, but we still have some days that are available. So not only programs for children ages five to 12, there's a youth outdoor active leadership program for children over 12, and our summer South Yarmouth Playground program, and special events, and all kinds more. So a couple of things that I did want to mention was how hard our Facilities Department has been working, dealing with a lot of bad weather conditions, rain, and with summer soccer, and summer baseball, and co-ed slow pitch picking up, and kind of a unique year for having multiple usage on some of our sports fields and ball diamonds, meaning different levels of play, which means we have to get fields ready for different base paths, or for full-size soccer and mini soccer. So big thanks to John Darcy, our Facilities Coordinator, for juggling that, him and his staff are doing a great job dealing with what they're dealt with. The other thing I wanted to mention was Gail Muse has been off, she's our administrative team leader in the office, and Gail's been off on a medical leave for the last four weeks. So she's got two more weeks to go, she's doing well, she'll be back on July the 6th, but I just want to thank all the full-time staff in the office that have been not only doing all the things they're responsible for, but also answering the phone, dealing with customers, payments, statements, bookings, all that stuff that Gail does. We really miss her, and makes me appreciate her more. So it's been busy, a few more gray hairs, but it's going to be a great summer.
Good. Sandy?
I just have a question on the pancake breakfast, only because somebody inboxed me to ask me, pancake breakfast, is that going to be on the waterfront?
Pancake breakfast hosted by Yarmouth Town and County Crime Prevention will be on the waterfront starting at 8:00 a.m. on Canada Day.
And I also wanted to know what the fee was for that.
I'm not 100% sure, is it $5 a plate?
Yeah, $5, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Any more questions? Go ahead.
Not a question for Frank, one that I did overlook. Your Worship, I was listening to your excellent interview on CGLS on Sunday, and all the good things that you were doing. Worship, I had a question. In the course of interview, and I was going to ask this to Natalie, but I know she's away, maybe the CAO could just deflect it, you made a reference that we have a new development team that has been developed in the town of Yarmouth. There's a new economic development team? I'd like to get more information on that. I was kind of, yeah, I was kind of caught about, because you said it was shaping very nicely, and that, and I think that some people are working and some people aren't working well in that, and I was kind of curious what this economic development team was, and, because I did get a query after the interview, somebody did phone me, and more or less suggested that I was in poop again, sometimes I don't quite go status quo, and I was just curious what this economic development team is and what I'm missing there.
So I don't think I said that. I didn't say that. No. No, I'd have to re-listen to that part. Maybe, maybe, maybe the other person that was with me mentioned that. As far as the team, I look at upstairs, and I think, I think between Natalie and the planner, and, you know, like everything's, everything's coming together, because we're trying with our priorities to move the town forward, and that's all coming together. So it's not an economic development team as such.
I just hope you serve us.
What's that? Development.
Good.
Yeah. If that helps, all right. Anything else for Frank?
What's the draw?
And now we have, welcome. Yes.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for having me here today. So I had sent over a presentation, the presentation that I have with me today, if everybody has had a chance to look at it, but I'll just go through it, because there are a few updates since this was, this first came about. So as part of the seafood and wine extravaganza, and as an enhancement to the fabulous fish fiesta, the society would like to bring the competitive boat races to Yarmouth waterfront for the very first time. These boat races are, the race is a competitive point standing race, and they will be racing for the William R. Murphy Cup. Race time would be approximately 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, August the 8th, 2015. The entire Yarmouth Seafood Extravaganza takes place August 7, 8, and 9, and so this event would be on the 8th to bring more attention to the waterfront. In order to perform, Yarmouth Harbor racers have a number of requirements, which, this is where some of the updates are. So the requirements, I have passed along to Greg Malaison from our Harbor Master, and he in turn has sent everything to Halifax, and has received back so far all of the paperwork that is required to actually do these races. So after this meeting this afternoon, I'm going to pick up the packet to make out the, there are certain forms that have to be made out. So I have contacted, as you see, the Port Manager and Transport Canada, and Transport Canada is the, are the people that have sent along the forms that we need to make out, and they are willing to assist the extravaganza regarding who should be informed of the event. Thus far, I have been to local businesses, and local businesses have, this is a very expensive event, $7,000 is the total cost. I have been to local businesses, and we, amongst us have raised 4,500, so that's the lion's share of what we require to do it. The event will take approximately three hours in total. There will be 15 30-foot boats, and a course set up by them to perform. Showtime would be approximately from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. High tide is on 6:27 on the 8th. This event could potentially bring approximately 5,000-plus spectators to the Yarmouth waterfront for most of the day, some of who will stay overnight or make this a weekend trip. The day begins with the fabulous fish fiesta with sponsor, with our presenting sponsor, Atlantic Superstore. The confirmed community organizations taking part this year in the fish fiesta are the Rotary Club of Yarmouth, Knights of Columbus, the Yarmouth County Museum, VON Tri-County, the Wedgeport Tuna Museum, La Village, and the Shark Scramble. Each one of these will be sampling one specialty seafood dish. Phil DeMille's band will also be performing in the tent, and this is always a very busy event, which brings approximately 3,000-plus to the waterfront. The first year we had this event, it brought 1,700-plus. The next, the following year, it brought over 2,000. Last year, it brought 3,000, so we're going with the fact that we think it'll be 3,000-plus for the tent itself, with a potential of adding 5,000 more spectators for, additional spectators for the boat races. The average crowd attending competitive boat racing is approximately 7,000 to 10,000, and that's been confirmed by Shelburne, who had a 7,000-plus last summer, and Digby had a 10,000-plus audience last summer, but they have never performed in Yarmouth. They also perform all around the province, because these competitive races, this race in Yarmouth would be part of a circuit that they are required to do around the province, and once they have completed that circuit and won, then they go on to national competition. So these are very professional racers, it's high-speed boat racing, it is, it's not, it's not under sail, it's a powerboat. Boats will be in the water for approximately four hours, allowing spectators the opportunity to see the boats up close and speak with the drivers. There will be a presentation ceremony after the race to present trophies and prizes. The Yarmouth Seafood and Wine Extravaganza Society has raised 4,500 towards the 7,000 cost of the event from local businessmen to bring this competition show to Yarmouth. The extravaganza is seeking the additional 2,500 from the town of Yarmouth as a sponsorship opportunity, and thank you very much for your consideration, and I have, I'm here for questions.
Good. Questions? What's the? Go ahead.
I haven't got my light on.
Oh, okay. My light? My turn.
Hi Carol, nice presentation.
Thank you.
Sounds exciting, looking forward to it, and yes, Saturdays, Saturdays have increased each year since it started. Have you also, is this 2,500, is the town expected to, are you hoping that the town will shoulder that solely, or have you also approached the, our neighboring municipalities?
Yes, I have. So I have been requested to do a, I don't think in-person presentation, but to offer argyle of sponsorship opportunity, which I have done, but I did it in a different way, so now I'm going to do it in the, in, I did it for the extravaganza, so now I, I think the request from them is for the boat sponsorship, is, so I have to clarify that. Yes. So I'm not finished fundraising, if that's what your question is, no.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Carol, good presentation, and I've talked to several people, especially in the Shelburne region, that these boats, they're fast, they're loud, and they draw big crowds. And when you think about the money that we give away to grants to organizations, and we're trying to draw people into our new Hawthorne Street area, going to be our new development on Main Street with our downtown program, I think this is one of the opportunities that we, I think we have to fund it this year, hopefully with some help from the municipality. Hopefully, I don't know what the scope or what we can do here, but maybe Natalie investigating do here, but maybe Natalie investigate with some other government agency if there's some fundings in place to, to help with this. Because I think once you see this here once, I think you're going to want to see it come in year after year. So, I don't know what we have to do at this level. Probably make a motion to look for the $2,500 for the support of the, the boat races. And hopefully between now and when we get to council in another three weeks, that there'll be some other funders that come forward.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, thanks for seconding that. Yeah, this is an interesting event, and I like Phil's motion because that gives three weeks for consideration. I definitely am support because we have funded, this could be an initial project that's good. So, and it definitely could be bringing people into the waterfront and really drawing attention. The crowds that come out of those boats are phenomenal, probably even more so than your parade of lights. I mean, the last time that we had huge crowds on the waterfront of that level was during the 250th celebrations, because it is a huge crowd drawer. Carol, what time is this event?
The time, we have to go according to the tides. So, it would, they're presuming to start at about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. They'll, the high tide is at 6:27 on that day. So, they like to be pretty close to almost finished because they can't have the tides, the tides going out when they're going to be facing in. So, they can't, they don't want to race against the tide, basically, is what it is.
What about now, things such as the Port Authority and all that bureaucracy and the, obviously the ferry is not going to be an issue, but what about the herring will be?
Right. Will be in season.
Were we, herring is getting a little low at that point, I think. It could be corrected. But what about the processors and that? Is that being taken into account?
Absolutely. I went to Scotia Garden because they, their business is the furthest, furthest up the harbor, and they would be the ones most affected by, because of the main area being filled with raceboats. And they are very much on side and probably will be contributing financially to the races as well. And also, they said to me, it's just really a matter of them informing their boats, that the boats need to, which they would be coming in at that time anyway, and they wouldn't be going out until the, until high tide, because the boats go out on high tide. So, it would be both before and after, and we have done that. We've had our two-hour meeting to review the channel and so on.
So, the, when do you have to put up the money for this?
They, the request is for a third of it to go, and I'm assuming it's as soon as I can get it to them, because they, at this point in time, even though they have set aside the date for us, I think if somebody stepped in and handed them the cash, obviously, they would give the date away. So, as soon as we can. They didn't, they didn't give me a specific time on that.
So, if I'm reading this right, you're going to still continue fundraising to get the remaining 2,500?
Absolutely.
So, what in essence you're looking for us, from us is, is more or less a, kind of a guarantee to pick up any slack that you're unable to film?
Correct.
Is that, is that the intent? I think that's, and that's, to me, I'm very comfortable with that, because I'm, I'm pretty confident that you would be able to raise some of the extra funds. But on the other hand, if we can have a, you know, if we're here as a specialty, then that's there. My question to the CAO, worst-case scenario, they don't raise the 2,500. Do we have the 2,500?
Jerry? We don't have any.
At this point, being early in the fiscal year, there's no, I guess, known variances to budget at this point. Not to say that by the next month or so, we might not find something. But as you know, our budget is what it is. And, yeah, nothing, I haven't had any indication from some of our, our expenses that it'll be any different than what we budgeted at this point.
Can look it over in the next, next couple of weeks. But, but this is 10. This, this is 10 people at $250. This is not, this, it should be easy. Say it should be. But it should be easy. Okay.
Yeah, and that just goes to the bigger question again. And I see on the internet today that Digby got $300,000 for sporting events and some festivals. But if you do, I said it, I think, here six months ago, my mind will say it again today, with the Coal Shed Festival, Extravaganza, the Fish Feast, Exhibition, Shark Fest, Tuna Tournament, over 35 baseball championships this year. We're going to have 500 people coming in for that. Music Week, the Antique Car Festival, the Multicultural Festival, the Abuptic Festival, Sea Fest, and the Parade of Lights, and the Craft Splash that they have every year. Like, we have a host of events, and hopefully with the, with the Antique Car show, that that really catches on and really drives people down to our Main Street. But I think we have to have that conversation with ourselves and with government officials about funding these adequately, because you're talking about, they're talking, I think with the curling tournament, which we got, they got $5,500 for marketing for the curling tournament. So, we have a two-week festival that we get just a little over 10,000 to 12,000 from the government agencies. And they got $21,000 for marketing for the Warfrat Rally. And they have a host of improvements that are going to not only the Warfrat Rally, but improve their, their curling and rink facilities. So, that's the conversation we should have with us and our other partners out in the municipality on, on our festivals again, because if you look at the lineup, I don't see a better one. And then Cape Breton have the Celtic Colors and they get a million dollars, right? There's a big discrepancy.
Or variance in, in what that produces and what we can produce in this area.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, Worship. Could I just be reminded, please, what, what the motion is now?
The motion is...
And depending on what it is, then I may have, then I, I may have another question.
Phil, you made the motion?
I made the motion to support the boat races for the, up to $2,500. And in the next three weeks, look for other agencies and municipalities and businesses to come on board. And we would fund the difference. So, if somebody raises, if they raise $1,750, then we'll do 750. If they do 1,250, then we'll do 1,250.
All right.
So, basically, look for businesses, other government agencies and municipalities to cut down on the 2,500.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That then brings me to, to my second question. And since generally, as I understand, the committee of the whole meetings, we do not vote on any, any expenditures, such as these. Is that correct?
We can recommend.
We can recommend. Okay. Then, it was not too, too long ago that, and I was, I was a little concerned, actually, I still am concerned, about the possible conflict of interest of three of us here on council being part of the Seafood and Wine Extravaganza. And it was suggested that we would probably have to look at stepping down because we would be in conflict. So, now my question is, are we in conflict? Can we vote on this?
I think I can answer that. Because when we became, when the Food and Wine Extravaganza became a society, any of the councillors that were on board are not members of the society. You are committee members that work on the committee, but you are not members of the board or members of the society.
And I think Councilor Dawes has brought up an interesting point. Because, you know, the other concern is, for example, I volunteer for Sea Fest. I do three events. Yet I kind of vote for their budget every year. I'm a life member of the museum, and I vote on their budget every year. Jim is well-known for his work with the YMCA, and he votes considerable on that as well. I'm just wondering, this is a question for the solicitor. I, my understanding of the Conflict of Interest Act, and I can be corrected, and I hope I am, that unless we're in pecuniary gain, it's not a conflict as such. But then there's the perceived conflict. So, I'm wondering if you can just help us out on that, because it'd be a good point.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't think it's something you can answer right just off the cuff. You need to know the exact nature of what relationships you're, you're talking about. Generally, if any councillors are appointed to committees by the town, then they wouldn't be in a conflict of interest. But it's certainly possible if they're part of an organization, I'm going to say part, that's the key part, whether, if society, like a member...
If we sign, if we had signing, signing rights?
That would be one factor. I mean, society has defined members. You can look on joint stocks and you can see who the members are. That, if that organization is coming to council and asking for money, and those people aren't appointed by the town, then they could be, potentially be a conflict of interest position, absent any pecuniary interest, because they're a member of that organization. If a councillor simply volunteers for somebody and they're not a member of the organization, like a society, then likely not be in a conflict of interest. So, I don't, if you're not a member of the Seafood and Wine Extravaganza Society, and I haven't checked the look, then simply volunteering for them would not, otherwise, not knowing any other information, you wouldn't be in a conflict of interest. Everyone, for other, you know, possible ones that raise, but Councilor Landau would have to know the situations of those.
All right. Thank you. And my last question, it were, my, my second part of my question, if I may. Your Worship, through you to our Chief Financial Officer, where would we, if, if we did have to, if no one else said, "No, we're not going to step up to support this", and it fell upon us, because we are now committing and, and I'm part of this, I'm all for supporting it. But if it all falls on us, whether it's for 200, $2,500 or, or $1,500, where is that money now? Our, our budget is so tight, we've already said no to some others. Does that mean that we would have to encroach upon our capital or our reserves? And please don't say yes. That just drives, I can't, I can't do it.
I guess if it, when it comes to the amount, we'll have to look at, we can look at some different expense lines and try to figure out if we, there's certain things tagged to do later in the year that we choose, maybe choose to do this instead of those. Or the other option would be, yes, take more out of surplus or reserves. So, there'd be some options, but you'd still have a decision to make.
Yeah. My, I love this. I think it's, it's great. And we need it, and it'll be perfect here. We don't have the money, so I'm hoping between now and then that some people will step up, because we just, we just don't, we just don't have it. So, having said that, are we ready?
And just a comment as well, your worship, since my colleague to my left is not here today, I have to take his role and speak a great deal. No. You're absolutely right, your worship. And I think in support of this, it's, the indication is, is that we are all hoping that the committee does indeed do that necessary fundraising. And I think the intent is that within the next three weeks, we should have a good handle before we go to council as well. So, we're hoping that within three weeks, when we hit the council meeting, that Mrs. Bogjarski will advise us where she is at with fundraising, so that may be a lesser figure.
Now, but then, does that still require, does that still require this motion? Because we're going to wait until, until the council meeting?
I have to recommend something to council. Yeah. No, it's a good, it's a good question. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. Business. 7A. This, we all received this letter. I guess the thought, I put it on, took it off, put it on, took it off, because can't really, you can't really police something like this. So, are there any thoughts, or do we just want to file it? It's a good idea, but it'll never, it would never be policed. And we don't need more stuff that we can't police.
This has come up, your worship, quite a bit in the past. This has been, every two or three years, we do get one of these. And you're quite right, it's something we just cannot police. You get into all the, all issues of private spaces and what's public and what's not public. And I believe Mr. Barrow, at one point in time, if I recall, gave us some recommendations as well, that it's a pretty difficult thing to do something with. Our bylaw officer is pretty well tied up maximum, let alone, we, we had that debacle, if you remember, way back when we did it with the schools, when we decreed all the areas around the schools that were no smoking. And the reality was, by the time we did something, the cost of enforcement and sector was just ridiculous. So, it's not much we can do, except hopefully people will go to alternatives.
Plus, I think, your worship, don't we have Raymond Godet coming in here to speak to us about this very issue here in the next little bit, I think? Remember that? I think he requested to be on, I think it was at the first of the year. Did that? He, did he cancel? No. It was on behalf of the addictions at the, he works with addictions at, on the second floor of the hospital. I think he wanted to come in and make a presentation on, on smoking in public places.
I remember that.
Yeah. So, I think he would have some questions and some solutions and some other possibilities that might be applicable to this. So, it might be interesting to come in here and hear, hear what he has to say.
I agree, Councilor Mooney.
High school all over again?
What a great idea. Could we maybe forward this letter to him and issue him an invitation to come to council to give us some wisdom on how we can resolve this issue? And I'd make, I'd make that a motion, that... I don't know. Maybe he's got some great suggestions. I mean, other communities all have this problem too. There may be something out there that we're not away of. So, I'd make a motion that we, that we invite, what was his name again? Raymond?
Godet.
Grayvon Godet, to make a presentation to Committee of the Whole regarding some of the challenges we're facing with smoking in public places in Yarmouth, and maybe advise us on some solutions.
Good. Moved and seconded. Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. It's interesting, it's interesting that, yes, this has been and always will be an ongoing concern. But it's interesting that the Canadian Children's Rights Council, who has been looking into this for however, how long, they actually released that the kids are doing their own research. They're, they're following, they're taking, taking with them the grounding and the schooling that they're getting from home. And they have released that eight out of 10 boys and seven, seven out of 10 girls say they won't date anyone who smokes. So, kudos to them. The kids are setting their own standards. That's where this education actually starts, is at home. Thank you.
So, we've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Vandalism. You know what? Can we put that in, at the police advisory, please? We've got a lot of stuff I got to put on that. Okay? Good. See, click, fix. Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Whoops. Yes, I am on. This is not going to take long. There's no motion required. I just wanted to share some information, that's all. It's harmless.
Go ahead.
Just a few relevant points that I wanted to share after using see, click, fix, our see, click, fix, if I can say this, see, click, fix, fixture, on the town's website. The first thing that I've noticed recently is the quick acknowledgement of reported problems, improved follow-up, notifications of other issues that are, that are, that are going around in town, and the subsequent closing of submitted concerns about town property. It has become more user-friendly, and it, I see that it's being used more than ever before. And although this feature was not designed to, to deter residents from bringing their observations to anyone on council, the turnaround... observations to anyone on council, the turnaround directs issues to the appropriate departments as they're received and subsequently addressed a lot faster. These are issues and under the headings on, on the See Click Fix tab, whatever it's called, as garbage, litter and unkempt properties, playgrounds and parks, streets and sidewalks, traffic lights, trees, you name it, it's all, all under town property. Now, through you, your worship, the CAO, roughly, how much administrative time has, has this or is this beginning to save, from beginning to end, where people can now actually, they're getting more used to it, and I think we need to get the word out a little more that it is out there and they can, they can get, they can get their, their complaint, their concern or their question to that appropriate department, sometimes an awful lot faster than through us.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a regular user myself, which, which might sound odd to you, given that I have pretty easy access to the people responsible for, for the fixing. And so what I do regularly is I, I use the app and I take pictures of things because often they're, they're fairly small things, whether it's a, a missing sign or a, a broken garbage can, these are things that can slip your mind, you know, an hour later when, you know, 100 other things have happened between the time you see the person responsible for the fixing and you've seen the problem. So I use it quite a bit. So where we are with it is, is recently we had, we've had a number of changes in staff. We recently held a training session with See Click Fix so that everybody is, we're trying to bring everybody up to a certain level of comfort with it, so that if we, if we promote it and if we drive people to that, to that tool, we want them to have the experience that you just spoke of, excuse me, with the quick response and get, get things dealt with. So we are meeting again next week, sorry, the week after next, again, a webinar with See Click Fix to, to up our, our comfort level. And I'm encouraging staff, and so far the feedback is they're, they're positive about it. So we will be encouraging people to use that mechanism because what happens if you, and I do this, if I go on and I take a, a picture of, of something like a, a knocked over garbage can, that email goes immediately, not only to Sabrina, who, who is the, the office administrator in, in operational services, but it goes to Rodney as well on his phone. And, and there is a website where Rodney can keep track and, and of that list of, of citizen concerns. So it is a, it's a bit of a work management tool and it is, it is visible to the public. And like I said to our, to our fellows, let's, working in the departments, let's, you know, embrace this tool and let's show the public, you know, all of the good things that you're doing to, to respond to their concerns. So I'm hopeful, but I'm, I'm cautious at this moment until we have that other training session and everybody's comfortable. So I'm not beating the drum too loud yet, but I think we absolutely should because I think it is a, it is a good tool.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Geoff. One thing that I wanted to add, two, two people, two residents have mentioned to me, when I recommended that they take a look at and, and use See Click Fix, they came back to me and said they enjoyed it and after having, after having reported what their problem or, or what they perceived a problem to be or their concern, they said that it made the process, made them feel as though they were doing something positive and it did not feel like a complaint. Just wanted to share that.
Good. Advisory Committee, councillor Dawes?
Thank you again. Now, this one does, this one is going to end up requiring a motion, as promised during our June 11 council meeting. I am reporting back to council after having spoken with Mr. Michael Wilson with regards to which specific advisory committee that he, that he wanted to sit on. And so, Mr. Wilson lives in an old, am I holding you up?
No.
Lives in an old pre-twentieth century home. His penchant is, is history, so he has, he has asked that he sit in on, don't make me laugh in the middle of this, this is...
This is serious. So he would like to sit on which committee?
He'd like to sit on the heritage committee, please, he lives in an older, pre-twentieth century home and his interest, he does have a penchant for history, so that is, so I will therefore make the motion that Michael Wilson be appointed a member to the heritage advisory committee. But I do need a seconder for that. Can I twist an arm? Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There's room for them on the committee, right? Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Waterfront Development Corporation recommendation. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, at the, at a meeting of the board of directors of the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation held on June 10th, 2015, the following motion was made and passed. The Yarmouth Town Council be asked to close the process to sell the Killam Brothers building and enter discussion with the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation Board to identify appropriate future uses for the property. So I bring that forward only because it was a motion that was made with the intention it would be brought forward to council.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I want to thank the CAO for bringing that motion before council. Nothing else for comic relief. When I read this, I thought this was a joke, to be honest. I thought, you've got to be kidding me. And here's my reason for that, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong. Was not that building originally turned over to the town of Yarmouth and was administered by the Waterfront Development Corporation? I believe the answer to that question is yes. Am I correct? No? Was not the Waterfront Development Corporation involved with the running of that building?
The building was, was donated to the town for a tax receipt based on its value and the Waterfront Development Corporation leveraged that, that asset to secure funds for what was phase one of the waterfront development around Killamsworth. So it was never actually property of the Waterfront Development Corporation.
Oh, sorry.
Did not the Waterfront Development Corporation, more or less through its staff, look after the day-to-day operations of the building? I believe Mr. Corning was intimately involved with that building?
Yes, but not as, not as a contractor for Waterfront Corporation, as a contractor directly for the town.
So the town was the one that directly looked after the building?
Yes.
The Waterfront Development Corporation, you're saying it absolutely no involvement whatsoever with that building during the eight years that, or nine years that we had the building? Is that correct?
We had it a lot longer than that. The Waterfront Corporation developed the projects that renovated the building. It was initially under the Parks Division of Operational Services. Our supervisor managed it and the marina up until, I'm trying to come up with a, a reference for a date, but it was sometime a year or two after Mr. Corning began for the Waterfront Corporation. I got him to look after that because of his interest in, in the marina. And so 10% of his, of his work was directly for the town and it was related to operations.
Correct. Okay, good. Let that sort it out. Now, the second bit of business is, I understand that the, reading this motion is that we halt a process that we're kind of involved in that might involve the sale of the building. So it kind of looks to me like a pig and a poke here because why? Does the Waterfront Development Corporation have a proposal that's going to make that building sustainable? And is there something happening here that means that that building, I mean, the whole intent of this whole process that we've done for two or three years is to make that building sustainable and to take it off the backs of the taxpayers of Yarmouth. By us halting this process, my understanding is that the building would then revert back to the town, which we would, we own it anyway, and that the Waterfront Development Corporation will step in and they will be the ones that'll be responsible, but we in turn are funding the Waterfront Development Corporation. So therefore, if there's any deficits in that building, so the way I'm reading this, are we not going back to where we were or am I reading this wrong?
Ken, that meeting, that, that was the first meeting of our Waterfront Development Corporation since last September. And I think I was bracing myself for a tough meeting and, and all other members of the board that day spoke. In attendance, as ob, as observers, were councillors Sandy and Madeline, and they will attest to the toughness of that meeting. And from, from a chair point of view, I, I think that we, I value the input of all those volunteers who, who are and still want to be volunteers even after the, even after the meeting. And, and they're, I think they're valuable assets as volunteers to our, to our town. And so, so they, they are making a statement and they want us to stop the process as is indicated by the motion. And I think at this point, I'm going to support this motion. It's, one, one of the members made a comment, you know, that $40,000 was a, a small number to, to keep on, keep the cost of the building and maintain the cost of the building at its level now. So beyond that, Ken, I'm not sure what to say, but I'll engage in a conversation with you with any more questions that you might have. But, but I value the input of all the boys and, and the girls on the, on the, on the committee and I'm, and I look for, look forward to supporting the motion as, as, as put forth.
There's no, there's no motion.
But I, I know Jeff has read the information, I can make that a motion then and, and then someone would second for discussion, I think we can go forth. So moved.
Okay. Yeah, Sandy seconded it. Okay. Go ahead, discussion. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. If the members of the Waterfront Development Corporation at that board, if they're willing to, to sit down and share their ideas, if they're willing to identify their ideas of appropriate future uses of the property, I'm willing to sit down and listen to them. I am. Thank you.
Go ahead, councillor Lanzo.
Well, I mean, no one's saying we're not willing to sit down with them. This building has been out in the public, the fate of this building has made the local media for some time now. It's, and the members of the Waterfront Development Corporation, I agree with you, Jim, they're very valued people, they're, they do a wonderful job and more importantly, they're people that actually represent the waterfront and are elements of the waterfront. And some of them have probably former ties to the building, I'm suggesting. However, I think, and this is something we have to discuss in camera because it's a property-related issue, so I'm not going into the semantics, but where we have a particular deal maybe in the works and we have a motion before us to halt this process without having why. Now, if these people who are very adamant to keep the building have a proposal that how that building can become sustainable, because $40,000 to me is a lot of change for what we can do in the town of Yarmouth, especially with potholes. I'm echoing my councillor friend to my left who's not here today. That's a lot of potholes we can fill for $40,000. And I'm, I'm just looking at money going out the door, we're running a lean budget, here's $40,000 potential. We've got a school that's draining us $12,000, $15,000 a month happening there, dollars or dollars or dollars. And to me, if we've got a proposal in, in that somebody wants to do something with the property that'll put it back on the tax base so that rather than being a drain on the town, it becomes an asset and a funder for the town, I think that's the direction we should be going. I, I cannot support a motion to stop a process not knowing what the plan is or why we're stopping the process. I think we should proceed with the process and the onus should fall on the Waterfront Development Corporation in the next three weeks because this is just a recommendation to come back to council and say, okay, here is how we're going to take this building, by God, and we're going to turn it into a moneymaker. And if they'll have that, I have no problem. But for, for us, we have evicted an art gallery, we evicted an antique, two businesses that have moved, where we threw them out more or less, or they left, so they're gone, the building's sitting empty in hopes to do something with it. These people were greatly inconvenienced and now the Waterfront Development Corporation saying, whoops, council, you made a mistake. I don't think we did make a mistake, but if they've got some super-duper plan that's going to generate some revenue out of that building, I'm all for, as councillor Dawes commented, love to chat with them and sit down and let's put the cards on the table and let's see where the dollars come from because, but if, we're, they're all businessmen. These guys are not only businessmen, they're business leaders. These guys are hugely successful, they can cut a check for $40,000, they're blinking an eye. So I got no problem on that one, but I can't support that motion unless we have something in, that's concrete coming in. I think the process should continue. Three weeks doesn't make a big difference, let them come back in three weeks and see what we can do.
Deputy.
Good argument, good argument, Ken, and good discussion. And I listened carefully to what you've said and in spite of that, we have the volunteers down there that are, I think, very important to our community and, and we now are going to be having regular monthly meetings. And so certainly it's on our agendas or will be on our agendas. So even I'm not sure how to proceed and I'm not sure where we, as you've indicated, maybe we need to have a discussion in camera on the actual status of the, of the building as we speak. But I'd, I'd still, inside of what you've said and I understand what you've said and I know we're looking after the whole town and not just Water Street so-called. But, so I'm, I'm still want to support my fellow board members on that committee. Thank you very much.
Let's table the motion till after we're in camera.
Does that, yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to do that at this point, but councillor Sandy has...
What was that? That you wanted to do? To, to table the motion until after the in-camera discussion. Okay.
Go ahead.
What were you going to say? Were you going to?
Oh, I was just going to say, like, I'm in agreement with, with closing the process because really, I would love to see us to be able to keep the Killams brothers. I guess I've said that before. I hate to see us get rid of our heritage. I'd rather see that we keep it and $40,000 is a lot of money, but yet I think that that building can be developed into other businesses or whatever, and I'd like to listen to the Waterfront Development and what ideas they would have, rather than rushing in and selling the building. Plus, we have to, I was on council then, but I guess you had to put those properties together before and spent money doing that. Now we have to spend money to, to change those properties, so that's going to be a cost too. So I think I'd like to wait. Thank you.
Councillor Lanzo?
Well, I just want to clarify that we're not getting rid of heritage. We went through this with Zion Baptist Church, it's not our control, but my understanding is the building is now a heritage building. We're in that process, which means the exterior cannot be altered without permission of council. That's a given, it's there. Now, true, there's a waiting period of three years, which we can go through that process. But in light of what is coming from the process that is now in place, and the CAO can enlighten us on that, I mean, this, we could just, the whole discussion could be moot, that whole deal could have fallen apart, for all we know. But on the other hand, to me, we are preserving heritage, but on the other hand, we cannot afford to sustain every building in town. I mean, and that is the concern. I mean, we've got private properties that are in trouble, we have a lot of beautiful structures that are in trouble, we're going to be in trouble soon and we just don't have a bottomless pot. And I'm hoping that if there's a plan to make that building sustainable, let's go.
Deputy.
I don't know where, so are you suggesting that we table the motion?
Till we have our in-camera.
All right then, so at this, at this point, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do we need to vote on table? Okay. Do I have to vote on tabling it?
Not till after, not during this meeting, if you're going to table it to another, the next committee, the whole meeting, you'd have to vote on it.
I don't think we're going to do that. We're going to, huh? Yeah, we'll come back to it today. Okay. Truck... Okay, truck turning movements, Vancouver Street. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Ernst is here. So at the last committee of the whole meeting, I believe it was, it was requested by Committee of the Whole that we take a look at the Vancouver Street, Water Street, Main Street intersection and get some modeling done around truck turning movements. And Mr. Ernst had that done, and the findings are attached to the agenda. And I guess I would, I want to give Counselor Dawes her due. I think she said here during that discussion that if we took 10 feet off the park, there'd be enough room there. It actually works out to three meters, which is almost exactly 10 feet. So, good on you. Anyway, the information's attached there. If there's any questions, Dave is here, and hopefully can answer your questions. Would you like, would you like us to walk through the diagrams and explain what they show?
Does anybody want, I mean, we're not engineers, so, engineers. Go ahead, Madeline.
Thank you, your worship. Through to the, to Mr. Ernst. The study that was done, that was based on 53, 53-foot trucks?
Yeah, standard tractor-trailer.
All right. Now, I have seen longer ones in town as well. I've counted up to near 50 tires on trucks that have gone through town. This option three looks like the best, looks like the best option to go with. Is that, would that, do you anticipate that that would also be enough for, let's say, 60-foot trucks to do the turn? Or is this based mainly only specifically on the turning axis of 53, 53 feet, 53-foot trucks?
Well, the majority of tractor-trailers are 53 feet. I don't anticipate any beach reins down making that turn. And I don't think we can accommodate every single truck that you can imagine, but this is.
No, that's what brought us here in this part, to this problem in the first place.
Well, their standard, their standard lengths are semi-trailers, and that's what we use, so.
Okay, all right. No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm not questioning, I only had a question, that's all. Wondering if we did go, let's say, an extra half a mile, and rather than just three meters, if we went four meters or three and a half, would you see that as a prudent, as a prudent step to accommodate any possible changes in the future?
We could go a little wider if you like, but I don't really see the necessity.
Okay.
It'll give you a little extra margin, that's all.
All right, good. Thank you very much. If there aren't any other, you're looking for a motion, aren't you? You, all right.
Just on the question of going wider there, one of the implications, if you go wider, is you may, you might actually make the Water Street entrance wider at the same time, which makes the pedestrian crossing wider as well.
Okay, all right.
Good point. It's taken 16 to get across.
Good point, good point. I just fall, I fall victim to my training all the time. I look too far down into the future.
Yeah.
And that's why I come up with this. All right, do you, do you require a motion for this?
Yes.
Then I will make that motion to.
Go with option three?
Go, yes, I'm sorry, I'm flipping here and my mouse isn't cooperating with option three. As presented in the Town Engineers Truck Turning Movements onto Vancouver Street from Water Street report.
Moved and seconded. Okay, Counselor Langel, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. In reading these and looking at these, Dave, I see in all, option one, of course, isn't going to work at all. It obviously has issues. My first question is, and you were not here at the last meeting, that hunk of concrete at the end of the bridge that is blocking the view of Water Street, and I noticed in option two, for example, a tractor-trailer coming out, you would have a prime example of that blind. There's a blind there as a result of it, because a car coming down is going to turn onto Water Street, could probably get the shock of its life to meet an 18-wheeler plus on the road, because it has to go over to that side. Has there been thought about doing something with that hunk of concrete that we've got there?
Well, I've gone, driven down there a number of occasions and didn't find it blocked my view of any traffic on Water Street.
Well, I want to congratulate you for being tall, but as short people, I have an issue, because I have had a blocked view. I've, and so has Counselor Dennis. When I try to turn on Vancouver Street, I know I'm horizontally challenged, but, and I don't have your height, but for us short people, it is an issue when you turn water. You cannot see traffic on water if you're coming right by that hunk of concrete. So I'm thinking of especially a senior, who's a lot, often they shrink as we get older, that could be an issue. And I'm just wondering, but if you don't feel it's an issue, we'll just wait for an accident, I guess, to occur, and then maybe it'll become an issue. Now, my second point.
No, first of all, we won't wait for an accident. We'll.
Well, that's the only way something's going to get done.
No, we'll address it now. He's, let's.
I don't mind moving on. My second point is option three that we're voting on. I notice in option three that we're coming awful close to that median. In fact, if your dimensions on that diagram are correct, now, I like option three because it's a much safer training, turning radius. The tractor-trailer is not on the wrong side of the road and doing the radius. But when I look as he's going into his straight section, he is literally almost scraping that median, by the looks of that diagram, at least in one of the options that are there. Couple of others are not so bad. But obviously, I guess the recommendation is to keep the median. Okay.
Counselor Dennis?
I just have a question on if we go with option three, which is a good option. Will this be done this year, or is that something that's going to be put into our budget for next year?
Go ahead.
I guess we'd have to go to Mr. Ernst and ask him if he would have any idea kind of the scope of the project financially.
I wouldn't anticipate that this would be a whole lot of money. It's a matter of cutting the corner back and putting new curb in and modifying the sidewalk somewhat.
Is that possible to complete within your sidewalk curbing budget?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be something, that'll be in this year's budget. All right, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to go with option three. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 2005 Caterpillar.
Thank you, your worship, just bringing up the memo. Okay, you've seen, you've probably read the memo from the Town Engineer. It's about the replacement of a 10-year-old Caterpillar backhoe. And he's recommending that we take advantage of the provincial standing offer, I believe. Yes, provincial standing offer, and purchase a backhoe for Public Works. And Dave, the, this was a capital item within your capital budget? Mr. Ernst? This was within the capital budget?
Yes, it was. I outlined it down.
Yes, sorry. I see.
Below there, so.
Thank you. So that's a recommendation for your consideration.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, your worship, that we accept the recommendation of the engineer to purchase the standing, the backhoe with Atlantic Tractor and Equipment Limited as per the standing officer with the province of Nova Scotia, with the amount of $112,019.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Tax sale deed and registration fee.
Okay, so.
It's okay.
Thank you, your worship. What we're looking for here is for council to set a policy which would charge purchasers of properties that are bought at tax sale, charge them a standard $300 fee, and that would be for the production of a deed once the six-month period has lapsed, as well as registering that deed with registry deeds. That's sometimes a point of confusion with purchasers of property. They don't realize that there are costs that are not included, that have typically not been included in the tax sale price. And so in order to provide them with a standard rate, and we can, we can both promote that at the time we advertise the tax sale, we can remind people who are buying at the tax sale of this, of this cost, and then we can, we can execute it when the sale is complete and the six months has lapsed. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the $300 charge.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Counselor. Okay. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Correspondence? Okay, and we have additions. Yours is the addition, 9A. Go ahead.
Your worship, this just came in, and it is about proposed administrative penalties to be levied by staff of Department of Environment. And there was a, well, there is a link, I believe, in the email version of this, I believe there's a link that you can click to, or sorry, there's an attached PDF. So if you read that, it's about a six or seven-page document, explains what it is. They're looking for feedback by the end of July on this, and so I'd ask you to give it a read, and if you have comments that you wish to provide back to the province on this initiative, that perhaps we could deal with it at the council meeting.
Okay, correspondence for action. Ville de Quebec. I thought we already discussed this. This is a different one? Okay. Go ahead.
I looked at this, your worship, and although Yarmouth is in the heart of an Acadian community, in a French community, we probably don't quite qualify as a French town as such. I think it's a wonderful project. To me, it would be more comfortable, I don't know what they're looking for, but Argyle or Claire would be a possible suggestion. But I don't know, I'm unfortunately not bilingual, and I suspect many of the sessions would be en français, but I'm not sure. And I don't know, see the benefit of the town for this. I would make a recommendation that this be passed on to the municipality of the District of Argyle for their consideration, and if, maybe they've received it already, and naturally support them in any endeavor. But it would be my motion, refer to that.
I agree. Okay, moved and seconded. We're just going to pass this on to Argyle, just to see if they, if they've been invited.
Yeah, aye, maybe.
Claire? See if they've been invited. Okay? Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Anything, is there anything, anything else here that we needed to tackle right away? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I have one question. And I'm sure it can be answered very, very easily, very quickly. The Yarmouth Public Library Museum, under the notes of financial statements that we received, there is an item for headquarters rent expense. Where's headquarters? That's my only question. If someone could answer that, that would be great.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
As your honorable member on the board, the, to answer your question, Counselor Dawes, the library building across the street, the Isaac Walton Killam Library, is owned by the Yarmouth Public Library and Museum, and it was part of the Killam Foundation. Half of the building is used by the Western Counties Regional Library as its offices. The basement area and a part of the building upstairs in the back is used as offices and distribution center. And they pay the Yarmouth Public Library and Museum, I believe, a sum of, I think it's $40,000-plus for a rental fee for the use of that facility. The Yarmouth Public Library Museum look after, maintain heat, and do all the utilities for that building.
Okay?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I understood, I understood part of that. My question keeps coming back. We give the library a grant every year. What part of our monies is paying for this, covering this rent?
Oh, well, you've got, don't turn your light off.
The, and I think we've got to be kind of careful here, and the CAO can, and I've had discussions on this, every municipal unit pays a library fee. If you looked in the audited statement, you'll see that every one of them is giving a dollar value.
I did. You're correct.
And that is something we really don't have any say over, I believe, CAO. That's, that's an amount of money that the province has earmarked that we have to pay, as much the same as with justice centers. Where we are unique as a town, and I've brought this up before, that building, we don't pay a penny on. That money that we pay for the operating cost to the Western Counties Regional Library is the amount of money that the province dictates that we shall pay, no different than the justice center, no difference than corrections, you know what I mean? But we are extremely fortunate that the Yarmouth Public Library and Museum and that board has taken off the backs of the taxpayer to look after the buildings. Other units are not that fortunate. We are the only municipal unit in the Western Counties Regional Library system, one of the few in the province where a private body looks after their own library. Waymouth Library that was just opened is funded by the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, they looked, of Digby, they looked after that building's construction. The Shelburne County Library, for example, that's just, was just finished, was privately done, but contributions from the municipal units. We don't make a direct contribution, and we should be very, we are very grateful to the Yarmouth County, for the Yarmouth Public Library and Museum for those years of service they've done for us. They've saved, I think I figured out once around one point, they've saved this community a little over a million dollars over the years, which is really good.
Well, I thank you very much. And as to CAO, do you have anything to add to that? Then I can say thank you very much. I'm glad I brought this up, because I think this cleared up, this cleared up a lot of questions for a lot of, for a lot of residents and most, some, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but for some of us who did not understand that until now. Thank you.
Go ahead, CAO.
Well, I agree with the Counselor. We're very fortunate to have the Library and Museum Society, they have that building, they look after the cost. That was, that was part of the original arrangement, when, when the Town of Yarmouth agreed to join the regional library and pay that mandatory fee. They advocated for us to do that, and their offer was that they would look after the building and associated costs if we would just join the regional library. And so, so that goes back, gosh, probably 40 years, a long, long time. The one piece that sometimes gets lost in there, as it relates to the headquarters of the regional library, is that we do provide a grant to the local library society to offset all of their property taxes. Part of that benefits all of the member municipalities of the regional library, because obviously that cost doesn't get passed on through the, through the rent, their charge. And so, we do benefit for sure by the society, but we also provide another benefit back to, that benefits the whole regional library system.
Amazing how much you can learn in a.
Interest.
Right? Okay, so we're good, we're going to go in camera? And then we'll be back to discuss the waterfront piece.